Council, your worship, thank you for hosting us tonight. I want to spend some time tonight giving you some facts. First off, I'm gonna start very, very basic, because I know there's some confusion. What is a BIA? It is an association of commercial property owners and tenants within a downtown area who work in partnership with the municipality to create a thriving and safe business area to attract shoppers, diners, tourists, and new business. This is straight out of the VOA website. So this is very basic about what a BIA is. It is a local board of the municipality, so a community council. All BIA board management and their staff must follow the policies established by the municipality for local boards. So it starts with community plans, and following that through the code of conduct, they must follow these rules. BIA is held for a strong and distinct image for municipalities and neighborhoods as a destination to eat, shop, work, and play. This effectively markets the area as a local destination, competing against Ecom Australia's and Moles and tourism destinations. It is a collective good model. Their prime directive is positioning, economic development, marketing, events, leadership, and governance. So how can the BIA help the municipality? Why does this matter to you? So countless studies have shown that the correlation between a healthy downtown and a healthy municipality. The very base of a mattress model for community economic development, the base of it is a pyramid, is beautification, arts and culture, events and festivals, and downtown revitalization. The middle of the pyramid is business retention and expansion, and the top is investment attraction. The concept is that higher level can't be reached, you cannot get investment attraction unless you have that base looked after. And you have a group of residents who care enough about this community, not just their own businesses, but the community as a whole, to take on a good chunk of that base there. So let's look at the staff recommendations. So a proposed $152,000, which is $62,000 higher than any BIA levy has ever been, with the following outline. $60,000 for beautification. Just for clarity, in 2018, the cost of the BIA, it cost the BIA less than $10,000 for beautification. Plus, a fully paid summer student did a Canada summer jobs program. So this is one of dozens of examples of how the town staff cannot produce the results with the same budget that a BIA can. It included $27,000 for Bay Quinety marketing board. So this is one thing. We may have different opinions downtown on what would work and what doesn't work. This is one thing I've heard almost everybody agree to, that how much of a waste of money that is. I scrolled back to see for myself, and just saw a stock photo, out of season photos mixed with some shared posts, and that was just in the last two months. Beyond that, it was a random stock photo here, a random photo from 2017 there. It's completely untouched, and it's $27,000. $35,000 in Christmas lights and displays, which is a larger conversation to be had. I don't want to touch that one tonight. However, the original bring up between the town and the property owners, because the town was going to take the cost of the lights, that's a larger conversation, I'm not touching. And last but not least, $30,000 for a CIP for market square. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have already been spent paying market square, and additional levy to cover the cost of getting better plan should not be on the backs of small businesses. So let's compare the staff plan to what was accomplished in the BIA's last fully functioning year, which was 2019, and this was on an $80,000 levy. So $62,000 less than what the town is suggesting. The BIA hosted guitars and carts for 262 cars packed the streets with thousands of visitors from across the region and the country. We had people from DC, we had people from Alberta in our downtown. It was a massive shopping day, it was beneficial to everybody. We hosted a fire truck pull, with 14 teams raised over $10,000 for a local PTSD service of first responder, a local first responder. We filled the street to the Big Red Light Show and put stores for the downtown shopping party. Those key events had a part to economic impact of half a million dollars. We have 600,000 social media impressions, now social media has changed in 2019, and this number should easily be surpassed. However, Bay Quinety marketing board isn't even coming close to matching this. We used traditional advertisement from Kingston to Trenton, we spearheaded the Remembrance Day banner project in partnership with Legion, and we spearheaded Digital Main Street back here, a program for all the limits in Edmonton, helping businesses in all the limits in Edmonton have access to grants, workshops, and trade coaching. There was enough good news coming out of the downtown that year that we generated $17,000 in free press from media resources. It's no wonder so many members are asking for this again. They want the mandate of beautification, marketing, and events. They want to have accountability and have a say on whether the money is spent on those items. And it's very good that the staff recommendation is more extensive, misses the mark, and offers no one but for members. Again, on the $80,000 levy, we produced results that the town staff cannot come close to promising with $152,000 budget. So before anyone looks at 2020, 2021 as an example of what the BIA has done for me, I think business owners deserve a capital of grace and appreciation for trying in the middle of totally uncertain and finding other rivalries. Two years, if unquestioned at times, in a 44-year history of BIA and BIA, should not be looked at as the norm, but the exception. I also can briefly extend that appreciation to the merchants association. They were created in a time when there wasn't a bad alternative. Their capacity, however, does not extend past sidewalk sales, draws, and brochures, which is, there's a purpose for it and a place for it. However, many businesses downtown don't benefit from sidewalk sales and all the benefit from a functioning BIA with proper communication, accountability, and resources to get to downtown. I firmly believe in the BIA model. I've been in BIA's across the province and in work. That's not my work for it, that is study after study after study. The BIA started in Ontario, and it's now growing worldwide. It is something Ontario was known for. You all benefit. When you allow BIA to foster local economic development and revitalization in how it is struggling down there.
I've been here before, spoken to this, not this time, I've been to a county council three times, and you know who I am, and you know what problems I own. I've been here for, I grew up in the, a lot of township, and I don't feel like I've a lot of that after 50 years of living here, so I'm saying that long to a good local. It's an interesting community, I had a choice to make, if I think 69, or if I stay in Toronto, or come back to the place I was born in. But I decided to come back here, and a few times, I wondered if I made the right decision, but today I don't regret it at all. I've got to be here. I'm a proud council, I'm a municipal council, I'm probably experienced, I have ownership, and I hope I, as long as I'm just giving some of the progress that was started last term continue, and I believe it will continue, I meant to say the, the endeavor, the project completed, maybe by coming, something I was like looking for the last 15 years. I'm just so happy to see what's happened here, we've made great progress in the last five, four, five years, and I think that's going to continue, I'm confident this council is going to continue. We've made progress, not just with the downtown, we've made progress on the areas too. One of the things that's on the agenda in March is our industrial project, I think there's more to be done on that. We have so many advantages, and probably many advantages we have, as I said, we have, like 27 counties, we have lots of waterfront, lots of property that could be looked for something else, developed, and I think that is what happened in mine too. We have access to Florentine, which is really potent Florentine, very accessible, that's a big advantage, that'll make it more industrial accessible in the concrete and architecture floor, and I think that's what happened too. And of course, we have the downtown area, which is a part of the benefit of the city of Heshaw section, most of them pretty well preserved, some of them have snowed down, creative shooters were taken down, but much of them have been preserved by, proud of that, I own the buildings I had for the last 35 years, if not 35 years, it's not long I've had the old post office, the building of the candleers. My kids, that's why I have a solid investment, should probably pregnancy, and I, I'm pretty stubborn, I can send solar, I do, today I don't regret that. And I'm going to continue to grow a lot longer, and I, I'm hoping that the downtown continues to grow away, that due to the last four years, and I think it will. The downtown is an asset to the town itself, to the whole town and the larger town. And heritage buildings, I bought one of the 97s to one of the older buildings, not that old, the old building. I know some of you live in the older brick, not directly above the buildings and the older building. And it's, people will come here and they'll go right up Dundas Street and up into the Prairie Street. We also have the area of Crown League, which has a bunch of classic buildings, not quite so nice, there's not too much heritage, I think it's there, but we have this center area beyond downtown that is so wonderful, and we just take it for granted, take it for granted because of what we did here, most of us do too. So these are assets in themselves, downtown is one of those assets, and one that needs to be preserved and strengthened, and maybe to have attraction, if you're to draw people in here, not just as a shop here in Bay Quinety, but maybe consider something that you want somewhere else, maybe decide to stay here. Because in fact, the people living here, the people moving here, you simply have to go to the big office down there to see all the money that's coming in, and the people moving here who live, want, they want a front of that area, and they're bringing money into the town. And this is a good place to live, this is a wonderful place to live, we have good transportation. So downtown is a part, it's one of the attractions to this town, like the industrial park, the waterfront, like all of the other things we have here, and the transmission, the other big feature too, we could end up with, you know, seeing the tension of the 19th century station area, which is, has a potential to, so we have to be aware of what our assets are, take advantage of those assets, and one of them is downtown. I'm passionate about the downtown as are the other people here, definitely spoke before, and was going to speak out there. And I think we need to manage the problem. I don't think anybody, initial in Australia, with the business improvement area, emphasizes the word area. The issue is not the area itself, there is an area that is part of downtown that has a shopping district, and a growing shopping district in one is going to, I think, increase in attractiveness of dining, as it has in the last four or five years, and everybody wants to live in a big area. The question is, how should it be governed? Emphasizing that word governed, and how should we, how should the tax work be, should be done by volunteer, the idea is worth a pass, when you define volunteer, it's a hard to find sometimes. Should it be managed by a board composed of merchants, some of whom own the buildings, and some of them rent from landowners, should it be, is there any other option really? And I think the secondary question is if the town decides, if you, if that should be, continues to be managed, at least for the time being, by the town council itself, perhaps with assistance of a subcommittee, do we give the subcommittee to look after that, and do we, the subcommittee of council, to assist and advise, or can we do that for a year, too? I assume it has to leave for a couple of years and see if the town council can manage it, and whether it's going to turn into a lot of disputes and end up taking up your time. I think we should look at that for a while and see if it works, I can, but that's up to you. But those are the two models, either go with the BIA board management, the BIA, that's what we're talking about, not the BIA, but the board of management, the BIA, which is the board of council, like typical council, as a governing body of the BIA, or should we go with the council itself handling it? In either case, I expect there will be a levy on the downtown workers, and I won't object to paying my share, I paid $5,000, not last year, not the surplus, we didn't have that last year, but in previous years, I don't mind paying my share of the levy. I don't think that, as long as we see the value of money, I don't think the other owner does. I don't object to that, don't think anybody's asking for something, you're not the head. I expect to pay the levy, I expect the others to pay the levy, and I expect it to be spent downtown, and I expect it to be accounted for, or it's spent by the board of management, of the BIA, or it's spent by the town with assistance of the government. So I think that's the first decision to be made. There are other decisions to be made down there, of course, whether the boundary should be adjusted, whether, when you do something for the downtown, such as the creative lights or the big red light show, in those two cases, that's funded directly by the town itself, in other cases, the flowers and the street furniture is funded entirely by the district itself. I think it should be recognized that something done for downtown benefits, not just me, the owner, the person in town, it benefits the whole community that happens by the downtown. So I think there has to be a decision made, a little division. When you have a creative lights, you put a big red light show, 20 cents that benefit the owners of the town, 20 cents that benefit the town as a whole, and somebody has to draw a line between zero and 20 percent, that's my suggestion, that decision is one thing we should, that's a decision we made down the road, perhaps, but those are the kinds of decisions that governments, we have government, with another board of management. I said it my better, clearly what I think about that, I don't think it's just worked in the past, I don't think it'll work in the future, but it might work by the way it is down the road, when we get the shopping district built out to the bigger district, when we give the town all the progress, where it comes up, and maybe sometime I can develop, but I think at least at the time, maybe we should keep control within the council and the decision, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other, whether there should be a community council, like the, the garbage community or the ordinary, that's a decision we'll have to make, a recent decision we made much further down the road. And I was going to say, you could make any time, I'd have something, a council, a deal or so. I think that's, that's what has to be done to put that decision in perspective, and I don't know anything else to say.
Great, thank you for your hold, council. I did want to say thank you for taking the time, everyone, please do us, I really appreciate it. I've learned a lot since in the last three weeks, and the biggest lesson I have unfortunately is not a positive aspect here. So I don't want to, I don't want to slay anybody, but I haven't had a whole lot of cooperation from the staff. I've asked John for a total, what Bay Quinety costs, couldn't get it from, he didn't take it, he wanted to know why I wanted to know. Well, because we're paying $27,000 of that $36,000 bill, downtown core is paying 75% of Bay Quinety. Bay Quinety was town, Greater Macquarie was not BIA, there are, and as well, Bay Quinety focuses on tourism. We have many tourist spots that benefit from this. Yes, yes, the restaurants and shops do benefit, but not to carry to 75%. Accountability to me is really important, and that's why I'm hesitant about supporting, well, I won't support a staff run downtown association, because I think we have the expertise within our own group to do what we've done so well in the past. And I've done some research, and I cannot find a single occasion where a town has run their BIA. Thank you.
My document at this point. Okay, the letter from Matthew is addressed to Mayor Richardson of Town Greater Macquarie. It says, Dear Mayor Richardson, in response to council's invite to spend comments on the town's downtown engagement, I would like to revise it, but I have both the resident and the Greater Macquarie, and a volunteer on the Town and Greater Macquarie and the communities of Little Committee. Greater Macquarie's downtown has some wonderful assets, a friendly small town ambiance with a charming mix of Victorian era commercial buildings connected to a scenic waterfront co-candid, co-candid by two wheeled public parks, with a business community that has a number of dynamic, compassionate, creative members of regular energy, expertise, and investment toward downtown. We're very fortunate. There have been many positive changes over the past few decades with new businesses and developments moving forward. More recently, I was excited about the large investment made by the LA Mutual Insurance in the development of their new head office site, featuring its fun and striking side over arrows, and I look forward to the continuation of efforts in the Greater Delta and the Giver District, including thriving residential commercial area, which hopefully will connect to the additional waterfront parkland in Osho River. I firmly believe a beautiful pack of the most important downtown reflects the health of the community, and that a healthy downtown needs a mix of retail, residential, parkland, commercial, and community municipal services. I think it is important that our municipality provides some support to ensure the health and sustainability of our core area. I recently watched the December 20th, 2022 council session on YouTube, and I agree with the comments and suggestions made during the downtown community definition by a ready customer, right side of her. Business owners remember with their customers every day, collecting valuable information on such things as whether it's working or whether it's needed, while the recent challenges of COVID have shown that businesses cannot carry the load on their own, nor should they. There are reconstruction activity, marketing elements, such as beautification, street sidewalking, regional marketing, a farmer's market, large scale events, such as the lake show and the lake parade, reflect the entire community and not just individual businesses. The whole municipality and downtown business community can find a right path, whether it's to refiguring a BIA or a partnership reflecting a division of responsibilities based on the expertise and resources available. Thank you to our town and our business community for all their efforts to reflect the pride we all feel in our downtown. Sincerely, Matthew.
Hi, Alana. I think probably most people in this room know me, because I've volunteered everything in this community, and I have, I hate to date myself, but 40 years, started when I was 11, volunteering at a hospital, I've volunteered in so many capacities in this town, and I've lived here my entire life. I don't know how we got here, I'm not going to lie. I, I've worked in the downtown since I was a teenager, I went to the grocery store, when I didn't want someone to call to consider you, but we were down there, I went to Social Bank down there, I opened a business down there, and I've been in business 12 years now, and one of my victims here, and honestly, it's been really, really positive experience. I've worked really well with the town, with the town committees, I've been on leave like once, I have culture days, I've worked with the county, with the business mentorship programs, and I've always felt heard, I've always felt that I've been able to talk candidly on the council level and the staff, and be heard in a way that made it such a positive experience. So thank you to everybody who made that happen. But I also want you to realize, although I have a fairly successful business downtown, there are many that are struggling, many, many that are struggling down downtown. What a lot of people who don't own businesses, don't work downtown, don't understand is that looking at the business and seeing people in and out, don't always reflect the success of the business. And the success of the business is very hard to achieve, and you have three years of digging, followed by two and a half years of pandemic. I'm surprised that half of the businesses are still open, because truthfully, there were so many days that I thought, is this the day that I'm just walking in time? Many, many times. The reason why I did it is because I love this town, I love this community, and I also have a special friend, a 26-year-old son there, who will be taking over my business, because he started it with me when he was 12 years old. I guess those numbers still hold, yeah, but he got the gist of it. He started his business when he was 15 years old, and I would never have opened my business without him. He chose to come from overseas to come back to this community, to eventually take over my business and to grow it, to what he has seen all over the world in his travels. The last short one, the BIA, I'm going to say, I don't know that we had a really functioning BIA, had really great merits, it worked really well on some walls, but it really did not work on all levels, because personalities, communication, communication is a key, and I think that is where my discipline has come. And when I'm communicating these things to my son, he is looking at me going, this is ridiculous. We need to work together as a community, we need to work together as a council, to the staff, we have to work together, we have to work together with communities and with, with the other service groups, arts and culture, the county alliance in Edmonton, to make our town what we know it is, because we have to show that to other people to get care for, so that our businesses can thrive, not just in our downtown, but our whole town, and our whole region. Working with many, marketing, you know, that role, that piece, we fought together. But as a business owner, I'm appalled at how much we spend for the marketing, but that's even a whole other thing. I guess my point is, we all are passionate, we all want the same end goal, I don't know how we're going to achieve it, but we're willing to listen, we're willing to work together, and we got it up to a point where we actually can do that, because I don't feel that we're there right now. I don't feel that we're being heard. I think you're listening, I think the last council is listening, I think the staff is listening, but I don't think we're communicating with each other. And as businesses downtown, I don't think we always communicate, do you know what we're doing? I'm not going to be 80 hours a week just trying to keep my doors open, trying to get these people in, and I have a successful business. So, you know what, we work really hard, and I think we need control of some aspects of, you know, where our tax money goes. I really do think we do, because we know what we need, we know what customers need as a retail, but the other people that have, you know, insurance companies and things like that, they also want to. So you may not know everything, but we don't know everything either, but I think between us, we can figure this out. So how can we do that? I think you see that there's lots of people who really care, and we see that there's lots of people on the side of the table here, let's just work together and make it happen, because, because we have a great town, we have a great community, and we all want it to prosper and grow, we all want to live here in a safe community, and that's going to be our next biggest challenge, is the safety of our downtown, the safety of our community. Already, we're struggling with it, so many businesses are struggling with safety concerns of the customers wanting to walk on the streets. You know, how about BIA works as well part of it, but it's, there's a bigger picture. And we all got it together so that we can come together and work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Richardson. Might be giving a little bit of an angle tonight. Happy with the number of terminals here, considering that the majority of people are not contacted. Anyways, I got a few comments about the previous speakers who spoke, but I don't need that in portion one presentation, so you just bear with me. What you have are some bullet points, and before I start, I just want to make some reference. My family, starting with Bob Lucas, have been merchants in the downtown core, as we know it, since 1930. My mother was shooting, but she's been a merchant downtown for 75 years. My mother is the lifetime achievement winner of the Tera BIA Association. We presently have several businesses and properties, both on Dundas Street and Science Streets. So I trust you'll take my comments with some merit. I'm a straight shooter, I have many concerns, but I also have solutions as well. So first of all, thanks, thank you council for hosting this meeting, maybe this will be a step forward, I get the background trap. The past few years, five to six years, have been a struggle, to say the least. Three years of water sewer, road construction, two, three years of COVID, huge impact on small retail slash professional service storefronts, including municipal operations. And I made a point right now, when we got shut down in March 2020, a lot of the non-inception businesses, which are the majority of your people down the street, including government service. government service, were closed. I spent three days combing through my accounts for all my businesses, wondering what the hell am I gonna do? And my mother, for the first time, her life said, this is the first time I've been told I can't make a living. To say the impact of COVID has been severe is an understatement. Things started to be a problem for me when our BIA Board of Management suspended operations in March twenty twenty. Two hundred and forty BIAs on the Terrill. We were the only one to do that. The second problem started when the full assessment went through for the BIA levy, and credit to the town, I believe Paul at that time in June, sent a memorandum to the BIA Board of Directors. What do you wanna do? Full assessment, no assessment, partial assessment? I'm still looking for that resolution from the BIA Board of Management. The second problem I have is when we had our obligated BIA membership budget meeting in November of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty. The membership showed up, there was people sitting out here today, who rejected that budget as a whole. The chairperson at the time said, which part of the budget do you have a problem with? The respondent said, everything. This council pushed through another full budget. Last year, the next meeting of the membership to discuss twenty twenty-two's budget came forward with a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar budget, which for the first time in forty-four years was rejected by your board of management. Your C A O then said, disband the BIA, let's take the eighty thousand dollars and now assess the commercial district again. I went to council and said, thank you for not taxing us again, because half the money you go back with, you didn't spend. And I'm gonna call it a time that the property owners who submitted money should be reimbursed. I'm hoping you have a third membership meeting to discuss how do you dispense the eighty-eight thousand dollars? Forty years, and I've been chair, I've been chairperson, I've been treasurer, I've been everything, including chief, bottom washer of the BIA, and I think you owe it to the membership to tell them, I spend the money. We have always operated on a zero-based, zero cost basis, what you plan to spend, if you don't spend it, you don't get it next year. Anyways, just bring up the speaker. The other problem I have, observation, these are observations. After a hundred and forty years of continuous municipal government service, we now have an empty town hall. Is that a credit to the downtown core? No, no, it's quite the opposite. Where are we today? Here are my observations as a property owner, multiple business operator, and a resident on Dundas Street, downtown Napa Bay. Surprisingly, the majority of owners and businesses have survived COVID. Vacancy levels are the lowest I've seen in a long time. Personally, I have no vacancies, and I'm so getting required, it's what a great problem to have. We have new businesses selling shop, specialty niches, some of them are here tonight, and I hope they take the time to speak. The market square seems to have a resurgence, and there are some new property owners and businesses doing a wonderful job on their projects. No direction, no input from the BIA, no nothing. We haven't had the BIA for three years. I'm doing okay. I think we have a great balance between box stores and small store communities, and we've come a long ways since Walmart sold its shop in early two thousands. I was on council when Walmart came to town. I endorsed Walmart. I got a lot of shit from people saying, how can you possibly endorse Walmart if you're a small business? I saw the need for box stores and small stores, because it keeps people in town, it brings people to town. And if I get one percent off of Walmart, I'm very happy. It used to be very crowded that our box store and small store communities are cohabitated. I think we're doing okay. A lot of people on the fine line, of course, but they're, they're opening their doors every day. Just for a footnote, by the way, the two years of COVID, we were full of stores, like thirteen months of those two years. And if we didn't own our own properties, or we had high parks, or we were tenants, we might have been gone. We were very lucky. When the Gilbert district gets, gets done, start a title there. Not only will you have thirty thousand square feet more commercial space, but there'd be about a hundred and forty-plus new residential units added to the current downtown residential inventory. There's been a tremendous smoke investment in updating this inventory, and we're attracting quality-type residents in there. Residential is just as important as commercial, professional, and public service. I live downtown, I'm happy. We have issues, I'm okay. So when people talk about downtown, you may wanna consult with people who are living downtown as well. There are people here that do that. Here's my concerns, which may be a little off the grid. Homes, inner downtown core is where people end up. They don't vote for Bay Shore Road, they don't vote Southie, they don't vote Rock. Downtown neighborhood needs to be part of the solution, but we can't do it on our own. Happy to be included in the process, if at all, the problems for commerce and residents will get worse. Property standard to buy law enforcement. We need to reach out to property owners, mentor them, acknowledge new owners, and help current owners keep their properties up. We got rid of a few bad property owners for the last couple of years, and the people in there that are reconstructing them, I thank them every month. Thank you guys for doing the job. You wonder why a membership list is important, this is important. Introduce yourself to the new owners, help them, give them guidance, maintain good progress with the earth. The other bits are not adding, it's basically about law enforcement. If you can't enforce a law, I'll get rid of it. We have a situation right now, we have a chronic abuser, a dog ship. There's a certain area, I know where the guy lives, I know what's made, I have video evidence, which collaborated from two other people, no action, and it's on your public parking spots. You can't, you can't enforce a basic dump and a pickup for local product abuser, you can imagine, then why do you have a law? Happy to discuss a detailed outcome. My other concern, Market Square Town Hall. A hundred and forty years of continued municipal service of downwind, I don't, I don't see the optics, and the reality of those big plots. Sorry, I sat in those council chambers for thirty-five years. Proud of the building, proud of the Market Square. I am disgusted with how it looks. Our town hall in Market Square is to the local level, but the part of the buildings are in Ottawa, to the, to the country, and Queen's Park to across. You can't buy heritage, you can't buy history, and a Market Square and Town Hall are as good and rich in both compared to any town in this, in this country. From Sir John McConaughey to April Dean's billion-dollar economic development deals, this building, Market Square, is hosting history for this community. We lost the arm ratings in the nineteen sixties, we're still fixing the whole that up. We almost lost the post office, thank you very much, Mr. Hopeful, for doing what you got. And we've lost other historical buildings and fire, now this. Every day they sit, every day they sit empty, they're returning the game, elements are damaged and economy, and we need to get this correct immediately. The farmer's market, don't need to discuss how we know where we are, but there seem to be a degree to get it back where it was. However, you need signage, you need public washing facilities, you need local business support, and you gotta stop moving it around. Boat launch, Water Street, stop screaming around, it's a public, but the boat launch, not for private parking, get it done, will we hit the glory days of dirt again? Probably not, but we can't lose what we have left for tourists coming to the, to the community and for leisure use of our local residents. You can't move it to the industrial park, it is where it is. Stop screaming around and make it come a hundred percent for that. The big bright light show. I was on council when we brought this project in. This was a model partnership between council, staff, property owners, merchants, and sponsors. There have been cease and discontent spread, and comments may have altered their status. All partners have been part of these discussions. Pass their prime, publicize alternatives, thirty thousand dollar internal costs, yet we can, we continue to put them up without consultation. As a property owner, I'm open to whatever ideas you have. It was a big expense then, a little hard to absorb a million bucks this time, but there we can be done with. But I don't like internal costs publicized unless it's a policy of this council, because I'll be digging through the records of every employee and every second they spend on every job. Not fair, not fair at all. Summation, I'm not interested in bringing the BIA back. Everyone has already agreed that it doesn't work. Past council, past boards, past membership, past staff. We, this is not nineteen seventy-eight. Our business community is bigger. They're all up the same grades. How can I get involved? We had Napa North, there's been a constant conflict between the North and South. It's time to create a greater Napa Business Committee of Council with subcategories of tourism, accommodation, restaurants, and retail. This is the time. You're not gonna recycle a sixteen-block area, it's outdated. I presented a survey to the BIA, which did not get into your hands two years ago, it took us six months to do. Seventy-five percent of the membership that you tax don't get any benefit or indirect benefit, nor the, the one hand you do with the BIA. I've challenged councils in the past, it's right up and down the street, and you're not gonna pause ever since. I'm not in favor of levy. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that what I heard? Majority of the last sixteen years of BIA levies have been thirty to fifty thousand dollars. Are you kidding me? I feel the town rolls former BISs properties and other local meetings to discuss all the eighty-eight thousand dollar surplus money we spent twenty twenty-two. That's still our money. You still gotta answer the bell on that. You've got the fight questions from the properties who paid for it to see how it's done. I want the town to recognize the downtown businesses association as a whole team group for area issues. Mr. Yeoman, a participating merchant, has done a great job settling down fifty-two weeks of events, dealing with area issues. Doesn't cause an argument. You wanna be part of it, you pay it, if you don't, don't. Good, good job you just did. Got six thousand ballots of email though, who've given us permission to talk to that people for future events. The last page I have for you, our action steps. So I have answers for all my problems. The last two pages, suggestion, suggested, action steps, comments, all the towns gave to. Number one, it's time we updated our four-on-signage. They're twenty years old, thanks for putting the ball back in the one, I still can't see it, the yellow is still not lit up. Reengage with Todd's signage. The last council canceled the Todd's signage for historic downtown Napa, for straight side park, and there's opportunity for the wineries down Highway thirty-three, the busiest highway in North America. Please let me put my source on the four-on, I'll pay the admin for it. Designated charter bus parking spot. I've asked for years, even when I was on council, to reserve parking lot on Mill Street, pass the area, and accommodate charter buses. This would help me, and all you have to do is sign it up, then we can push it, we can push it, get charter buses out here instead of Keenster or Bell or somewhere else. How nice would it be to get a charter bus every week? Fifty people at a time, three hours at a time, shopping, doing something out there? It's there. Create, uh, excuse me, commit to multiple blocks of Water Street, or is that, create at least two satellite tourist information kiosks from May to October. Yeah, that's a little bit expensive. Market Square and Highway thirty-three were the hydra planets. Thursday to Sunday, capturing people with inquiries. We had to let Walmart stores never open when the turds came anyway, but, you know, again, we're looking for solutions, not, not definitely problems. Support downtown merchants in initiating one-year public parking advantage program to educate and better manage. We've already, Mr. Yeoman's, myself, have met in the town staff. I'd like to have a one-year marketing program where we educate properties, customers, tenants of the parking. We don't have a parking lot. It's management, getting rid of the abusers. And twenty years ago, when we were collecting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in parking fees, I would get a lot of businesses that were going to come downtown because of the parking problem. We are universal in our ability to let people park anywhere in the municipality. You have no idea how much an asset can cost. And now, would love to spend time and educating everyone, it takes a year, and won't cost you anything. Sponsor a flyer, get a, get a, someone's a sponsor flyer, probably ten thousand at a time, maybe two hundred thousand flyers that go to every customer company in the Host public and property owner business meetings to discuss the big bright light show. You know, I never said a word this year about putting lights on a building. I'm not gonna tell the guys, you're gonna have issues right now. Thank you for putting the lights up, but they're on my building. If you want to promote, get the properties on board, it's a partnership. You think you're gonna just stick along the building without permission? That's not gonna happen. Ensure greater Napa business and attractions are primary, in primary government and group of business directors and influence groups. I subscribe to all the blogs, T O, blog dot T A, like all this stuff. Best Little Theater Fitness in the Terrill, best Christmas play show, best this, this, that. I've never seen a Napa show on anything. Tiffany will attest, what she said about capturing the, the, uh, the sites or the hits or all this other stuff, quantify that, if you want to, if you wanna say it's thirty thousand dollars, but the lights up, show an offsetting account, uh, mine, this shows how much benefit we're giving in free advertising for it. But I hate reading stuff and that, you know, the best hall theaters in eastern Napa. Every theater was mentioned except Southern. Why? These are, these are free advertising links that we can, we can, uh, add to. The, I've seen the Performance Market, Market Square, even there. The, uh, one of the last two bits, I'm almost done, thank you very much. Create a greater Napa Business Committee of Council and break it up into the categories, retail, lodging, restaurants, and tractors, meet monthly, and have what I call two launches. Have a launch on the screen, which is, um, summer, fall programming, and then winter, winter, uh, spring. Everybody will be on board. We, we, that's how you promote the community. You can spend a million dollars on advertising, and never match the publicity, yet they're getting everyone involved. And one of the last things, the seven, I complete commercial property ownership merchant list. I know the council hates me, W R F, that I've been asking for four years for the membership list. I also serve on the Chamber of Commerce, I can hit the button in one second and contact every member in two seconds. Why do you need a membership list? Voluntarism, sponsorship, emergencies. I got a call from Tiffany when she was the manager of the BIA. We got a party, they're forty-five, go down. We got a party at forty-five thousand this year. Well, I found the owner, it took me eight hours, he's in India. We didn't have a contact list. So these are some core items, I will leave you. Thank you for hosting this meeting. I hope what I'm hearing is not true. And the hundred forty to fifty thousand dollars, that is not gonna happen. You can't assess the sixteen block area that. Our doggies are now from four-on-one to riproving in between. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Todd. I'm Jeff LaFleur, uh, I'm a sure Napa Neet, very good person. Um, the, the experience, I'm not a business owner. I'm a long time resident, also a volunteer, I would think, um, for the town. And one of the very terrific experiences, um, that I've had, uh, working with BIA was Guitar's in Paris. Um, that was a great event. Hugely, hugely disappointed that we couldn't pull it off last year. Um, and looking, are looking forward to, um, seeing that come back.
I'm from Napa Neet, I'm not a business owner, I'm a resident. And I've been on a couple of committees, now I'm a consumer of downtown. Uh, a lot of folks here probably know me because of new stores. Uh, I can speak on behalf of the downtown, in a sense that three, or residents' point of view, it's critical to this town and our livelihoods, for downtown on. And it is, it has seen worse times and it's certainly a much better time. I think Hubert said it best, it's an asset to the community, absolutely, it's an asset to the community. And I think that it's also a hub. It's the thing that attracts people here, um. And so in looking at the last couple of years, a couple of things really caught my eye is, we now have a strategic plan. And I think that's been passed up. We've got a strategic plan and we have a strategic action plan. Which I really like the format and layout, um, and it does talk quite a bit about the downtown and the collaboration and the things that we can do together. I guess what I'm hearing now is maybe some of that's not happening. We also have a recreation master plan, still in draft. And I had a chance to read that as well, I've read it several times. And so, the other half of my head is, I am a recreation guy. I'm a runner, or used to be until I broke my legs severely. I'm a snowboarder, I'm a cyclist, I'm a snow surfer, I'm a speeder. I'm all those things, a backpacker, and I'm a destination, I'm a hub guy. And I go to places around the world because of those kinds of things that attract me into those downtown cores. Where you've got those amazing niche markets, where you have amazing craft products, we have amazing craft vendors. And we have lots of those, we have potential for even more. And people come to this community for those kinds of things. This break, we've got great box stores, uh, we've got great fast food joints, but I don't think people remember so much about that. And as much as, hey, downtown Perth, downtown Moncton, downtown Southwood, downtown Delphi. They talk about the downtown. And I think that's really, really important for us. And so, when we think strategically going forward, some of the things I think we missed, Sean, I think you've touched a lot of really good points. But one of the things that we haven't missed is that we should be more of a cycling and community pedestrian friendly hub. We have all the infrastructure that we have in place. You have also, I'm a car guy. Been a car guy my whole life. I've lived in brief cars, hot cars, built cars, fixed cars, boats, planes, helicopters, I've built them all. But most importantly now, I'm a bike guy. And this town gives so much more, we started to start moving away from our industrial connection to the car. Start thinking about the future, and the future is EVs, it's walking, it's pedestrians, it's mass transit. And that's gonna lead to a transformation in downtown that's even better than we expected. So when we move forward, I certainly hope we start connecting our strategic plan and our recreation plans. Because that's one of the missing things in all of these plans I've read. Our official town plan also has serious holes in it that don't connect. And there's where I think I'm hearing tonight is that a lot of this top collaboration, but where is it? Where is the collaboration between the town and the strategic plan and the downtown and the recreation people, the arts and cultural people? There's where I think we're missing some of those pieces, because they're all here. We just have to put them together yet, and I don't know how we do that. Um, I'm certainly willing to help. Like Liam, 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 the actor. He says, I have a unique set of skills. Well, I have a unique set of skills too. And I would be willing to look at the uses down in that, particularly something I love the most, and it's downtown. So anyway, thank you for having us, very, very, very opportunity, I'm very helpful.
I just get to identify yourself?
Absolutely, my name is Sarah Flannigan, I don't know business, but I do work in a downtown business. I've worked there for seven years. I came from corporate retail, I managed a payless for fifteen years in Basel. I had the opportunity to apply at Starlet, I was hired, and it honestly has changed my life, being in a small town. I grew up in Deserano, came to high school in Napa Neet, always said, oh, I've never been over there, I don't know of in Napa Neet. Came back to town and love it, I love our downtown. I've gotten the opportunity to meet so many amazing people, I, they're like family now. Uh, and we do need to work together, it is an amazing community. I hear it all the time, oh, you're from Deserano, Napa Neet, oh, what have they have done for? I'm like, actually, a lot. Come downtown, see how amazing we are. I can remember the days when we downtown, we did go down there. We rolled up our sidewalks, we had giant tires, we had Hogarts. And that was really all we had, and we had an amazing opportunity to keep this flourishing and work together. As many people have said, we have so many amazing people in this community. We need to bring them together, communicate, and keep making this town what it's, what it can be anymore. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
I told myself I wasn't gonna talk to you. Yeah, Colleen from Park Story, I think we had a few minutes. Cheerful, I knew you. Um, I'm just on the same page as you down there. I mean, I, I've been living down downtown, and we've been really glad we came here in twenty fourteen. Um, I wouldn't want to have our business anywhere else than the Dicks. The only things, the only theory that, I mean, we need to, we need to start talking, we need to start working together. And I think this is a wonderful first step. Um, I really, really appreciate the opportunity to come out and have everyone here. I'd love to see the market back at home. We wouldn't have our business if it weren't for Napa Neet market. It's that simple, that's where we started, that's where we grew from. And we have a beautiful little business because of the Napa Neet market. I want to see it back downtown, it's called Mark's Bar or recent decks. Um, I don't know what else the plans are. You know, I don't know what this council is looking at doing, I'd be, and I'm not standing on where the final intervention, so if you guys could catch up with me right here, I'd love to know. Um, other than that, that was, you know, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, about ten minutes, I'll need financial, so I can wifi on building downtown, thirty-five minutes, three minutes. Uh, like a lot of the business owners here, building owners, we suffered a bit through the big jig in two thousand and eighteen. I can give you the dates and times that we suffered. Uh, we had my shop from town in times, till the bucket was discovered by Sean and Stormy. We never received any kind of cravings that we don't. If anybody recalls that. Um, so we've suffered through that, we haven't had tough times to approach different type of business or financial advice. So we've had people in talks. I'm not firmly against the BIA, but I'll give you some reasons I think as to why it wasn't working. So I heard Tiffany Lloyd come up here to get a bunch of numbers on past BIA's budgets and what spending, who's done to accomplish stuff. And then afterwards, it wasn't a single question to council on how they accomplished stuff. But I'm hearing a number almost twice that size, that's the potential levy. Is that correct? Can anybody answer that for me?
Sorry, what potential levy?
Potential levy that we're talking about, yeah. Is that thirty-five thousand?
That, I'm, yeah, I have.
Nobody has a record voting on, no, going forward.
Oh, yeah, we haven't even discussed the going forward levy, as about, like I said, just.
Sorry, it was just the, the staff recommendation that was in, um, the last. So nothing has been passed.
Nothing's been passed, and, 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 like I say, we're, we're, we're a infancy of trying to figure this out. That was just a staff recommendation, or nor near setting levy of the.
I recommend the staff consult if someone knows them on what's, I should be touching areas. Uh, Randy stated that she'd ask for numbers on what the BIA plenty partnership possible is. But those aren't given, is Randy, is there a reason they wouldn't give them? Like, can't the BIA levy?
I think we have, I think it's not today, if, if the number, if it's the number.
We paid a bill, right, so it must be in voice.
So, so, so there was, there were numbers given, there were some, I don't know.
No, there was, the numbers I would give to me was what the BIA paid for. The BIA paid for six times three thousand, eighteen thousand for twenty-two. And nine thousand for twenty-twenty-three. So that's close to twenty-seven thousand. And I asked last week, or this week, what was the total bill for the BIA? Or, excuse me, what was the total bill for the town of Napa Neet people who paid for it? And you didn't think it was necessary that, I knew that information. You had asked me why, what, I can't remember the word you used, but you asked me, why do I know? Because we paid it, we paid the majority of it. It was never supposed to be a BIA cost set. It was a town of Greater Napa Neet, they made a commitment, BIA did not make a commitment.
Just, just give me a second. Thank you. Uh, I, I apologize, like I say, we're trying to work through this as best we can, okay? Um, we are in a position to provide a staff report with respect to the information that Randy continues to talk about now. We, uh, in a staff report at the next council. I, I think I know where you're writing, or where you're heading with this writing, and I think I don't, I just don't want to comment until I know for a fact the numbers that I'm talking about. Um, but we will provide a staff report at our next council meeting with respect to, I think, the information we're looking for.
The information we're looking for for twenty-twenty-two is already happened. We've already been paid.
That's true.
So the commitment that the town of Greater Napa Neet made to BIA plenty was on behalf of the town of Greater Napa Neet, not on behalf of the BIA.
In the staff report, it will identify the details of which, what you're talking about occurred. And will, it will be within, or with reference with respect to twenty-twenty-two advice. Yes, and, and, I can, I think it would be probably proper and adequate that we will produce that report at our next session of council, which would be on the very first, uh, I think one. This one? Sorry, maybe the end one, which are the things in the third person, so. Yes, Zach, we'll just, we'll, we'll let Tim finish here first, please.
All right, uh, business owners, business owners who wants to actually pay a levy correction. So I see, I'm sort of building, I'm just, I'm just saying, I will, but we don't have a membership list. I understand the problem of the BIA attached to be able to get a membership list and be able to contact building owners for consults if you truly wanted. Because you can find us by our tax codes. We should get that direct to the social list to contact building owners and get their. Um, if you can contact us, give us, if you're there to us, and you should give us, give us the most of your rights. Um, and the last thing is, I think the problem the BIA has been having yes, I think the problem the BIA has been having for the last few years. It is, uh, the needs, I've shown, I've been encouraged to show up by Sean and my others as well, is the board is being asked to turn questions on spending and spending decisions. And not being asked their income of budget. And when they were asked for their income of budget, the budget being, it not feels building owner, I'm sure the other building owners here as well over there. But also, uh, the state that they didn't filter in, goes to take into consideration. That's the question I ask, is they don't feel, I don't feel the board is listening to the building owners and to the business owners. So if it's gonna happen, and there's no other way, this time it needs to be, but consulting, consulting, and it's these ones.
Thanks, Tim, if, if it's, uh, I'll just speak to you, it, it's good to hear the good, the bad, and the other. If that's how we're gonna fix this thing, and that's how we're gonna make this thing work. Um, so thank you. Um, we don't want to live in the past, but we have to learn from the past. Because we don't want to repeat the problems that we had in the future, so, thank you. Is there any other questions of, uh, Tim?
I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, I just, I, there's a lot of really good points. A, a lot of, uh, problems were brought up, and a lot of solutions were brought up. The problem is, is that, um, council, you have a huge job for a huge region. And the finer details of parking spots and, and hanging baskets is not what you need to be spending your time on. And the benefit of a functioning BIA is that they have a staff person that gets to be down over to them. They get to do all the work, they get to collect the data, like how many cars were in the street, and economic benefit, and the membership list, um, that was mostly complete except for individuals in India. Um, and, and then my contact was always Grant. And I would call Grant up and say, this is what we collectively need, uh, uh, help with from the town. Can this be arranged? How can we work together on this? And it wasn't this business owner and this business owner and this business owner and this business owner calling council members and staff members, and it being chaos. Grant was my contact, he was fantastic. And then also, when Grant had a question, if he, if they needed information to go out to the members. That's something I can do, if they needed information, make the information or help with the project, that's what, that's what I was there for. So there was one course directors that any member could come to a meeting and say, we'd like to see the financials, we have some concerns about that. That was all done over here. And then they gave the directions to the staff person who then executed. Right now, without a staff person, without a functioning BIA, you're getting hit from all angles. And, and so is town staff, and it's exhausting, I know it's exhausting. It's a really big job, but the, one of the benefits of the BIA is that they get to, um, maintain their own budget. Operate within their mandate, uh, report to the members, report to the membership, be accountable to the membership. And then they're proactive, once a month with their minutes, and say, this is what we've done, this is what we've done with the money. Um, this is how we are supporting municipality. So, and that's just my, my final two cents.
Yeah, no, 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 thanks Tiffany, I mean, again, and I'll reiterate the purpose of tonight. Obviously, we want to hear about all the good things in life, that, that's what makes us happy. But we also need to hear the bad things in life. And that's the other thing that we have to do. So in order to rectify anything that may have happened in the past or may happen in the future, we have to be informed with as much information as possible. And I think we've got a pretty good cross-section of what we need to do. Now, moving forward, I think what we need to do with the council, and, and I'll, I'll listen to other members of council, uh, either collectively tonight or individually later. Um, we need to absorb this, we need to absorb what we heard, try and establish where things got off the rails. And ensure that moving forward in whichever manner that we're going to move forward is going to be, is going to be a winning exercise. The, the consistent thing that I think, at least I've heard tonight and many others, is that we have a very, very passionate bunch of people in our community that want to win. And it's my personal opinion that we are on the cusp of some very, very good things happening. Even in spite of a two-year world pandemic that has happened. We are in a very, very good position to make things happen. And every one of us, whether it's the BIA, whether it's, it's, it's stores up in, up the north end of Napa Neet, or whether it's residents in this community, we're gonna win. It, it, I see nothing but good in the future. However, we've got to ensure that each and every one of us are gonna start to roll in the same direction. Because if we don't roll in the same direction, we're not going to win. And, and that's my biggest fear, so I thank you for being as candid as everybody has been tonight. It has been, um, I think, very important for each and every one of us here to hear everything that was been said tonight. And we are going to move forward, we are going to be winners, but we just gotta keep in mind that we need to all roll in the same direction. And I think we can, because everything I've heard tonight is that everybody loves this community, everybody loves the downtown, and everybody wants to win, and I know we can do that, so. Um, I guess if there's anything else, is there anything else that I need to mention, council wants to say?